Okay, the Budget and Appropriations Committee is reconvening budget hearings for the following bills. Number one, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the City of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2019 year. Number two, annual property tax for fiscal year 2019, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore for the period of July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, providing for estimated billing pursuant to state law, and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. And number three, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, for the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal year 2019, providing for certification of the approved budget to the State Superintendent of Schools, and providing for a special effective date. I've been joined today, first we'll do introductions. To my immediate left is Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, Vice Chairman of the Committee. To his left is City Council President Bernard C. Jack Young. To his left is Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District, Member of the Committee. To her left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. To her left, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. To his immediate left, Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District, Member of the Committee. To my far right, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have our fiscal analyst, David Simpson, in the back. Michael Huber from Council President Young's office, representing Mayor Catherine Pugh. Our Karen Stokes, Poetry Deal, and Karin Banks, from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Before we get started, Mr. President, do you have any introductory remarks?
Good morning to everyone. Mr. Chairman, I defer my remarks until at the end.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, we're going to follow a format similar to last year. We are going to start off with the Department of Finance, Director Raymond. If you would please kick things off, if you could please introduce all of your staff that you have with you, and do your best to keep your presentation under 10 minutes. The next agency's coming in at 10:00 a.m., and I would like to keep all of these on time. Anyone else who's speaking, please feel free to just sit where you are, I think the mics are all live. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, President Young, members of the Committee. I'm Henry Raymond. I serve as Chief Financial Officer for the City. Staff with me today include the Deputy Director, Steve Kraus. The Manager of the Fiscal Integrity Unit, Joanna Calada. The Bureau Chief for Accounting and Payroll Services, Sandy Stecker. Bureau Chief for Budget and Management Research, Robert Sinemi. Bureau Chief for the Bureau of Procurement, Aaron Smith. Bureau Chief for Revenue Collection, Janice Simmons. Bureau Chief for Risk Management, Doug Kerr. Bureau Chief for Treasury, Janelle Rogers. And with that, we'll go through the slide deck that we've prepared. The first slide includes the Finance Department mission, which includes providing excellent customer service to our citizens, providing a full range of financial services to city agencies, properly collecting and investing all monies due to the city, managing the city debt, and developing and executing sound fiscal policies and practices. This is the Department of Finance organizational chart at a high-level overview. For fiscal 19, the recommendation is 295 positions, which is a decrease of two positions from the current fiscal year. The overall budget request for fiscal 19 is approximately $34.4 million, which is a 1 percent decrease over the current year. The proposed fiscal 19 budget will allow all bureaus to maintain current level of service. And the pillar that the Finance Department services align to is accountability and transparency. The first service, Service 148, which is revenue collections, the 19 recommendation is $6.6 million. This service collects all monies that are due to the city, and issues most bills for most city services. Service 150, Treasury and Debt Management, 19 recommendation is $1,056,000. This service provides for the management of the city's cash, investments, debt, and The next slide, Service 698, is Administration Unit for the Finance Department. The recommendation for 19 is $1.6 million. This service is responsible for the overall fiscal strategy and fiscal management of the city, and the oversight of all of the bureaus within the department. Service 699 is procurement. The recommendation is $3.3 million. This service offers city agencies a professional procurement practice for the purchase of goods and services. Each year, this service procures approximately $500 million worth of goods and services on behalf of agencies. Service number 700, Surplus Property Disposal, is recommended at $121,000. This service offers city agencies professional service for the appropriate disposition of Service number 701, Printing Services, the recommendation for 19 is $3.4 million. This is an internal service fund. This service funds the operation for supplying document services to city agencies, all graphic design and printing. Service number 702, Accounts Payable, the 19 recommendation is $1,064,000. This service is responsible for paying all vendor payments on behalf of the city supporting The next slide, Service number 703, is Payroll. The recommendation for fiscal 19 is $3.4 million. This service is responsible for all payroll-related issues citywide, payroll tax reporting, garnishment Service number 704 is Accounting. The recommendation for fiscal 19 is $1.9 million. This service provides all accounting and reporting services for the City of Baltimore in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Now, one comment regarding the Accounting Bureau. We are transferring two positions from the Loan and Guarantee Program to Accounting, and we're phasing out the Loan and Guarantee Program. The Loan and Guarantee Program was initially created in the early 80s under Governor, excuse me, under Mayor Schaefer at the time, to support various loans, guarantees, bond issuances, et cetera. Much of those transactions are near completion, so the number of transactions is very low now, and it's not cost-effective to continue to have Loan and Guarantee as a separate enterprise fund because of the cost of performing the annual audit. So in accordance with the Department of Audits, the decision was made to eliminate the Loan and Guarantee Fund, and transfer the two positions that support the work of the Loan and Guarantee Fund to the Accounting Service. So I just wanted to note that. So for Loan and Guarantee Program, you'll see that the fiscal 19 recommendation is zero, and that's because we're eliminating this as a fund. Service number 707, Risk Management. This is an internal service fund. The 19 recommendation is $8.6 million. This service administers the Risk Management and Insurance Program for the city, manages the workers' compensation, and Occupational Health Clinic, oversees accidents and things of that nature. The Fiscal Integrity Unit is Service number 708. The recommended level of funding is $1.9 million. And this service provides for...
Seven.
I skipped one.
Yeah, okay.
So we just finished Risk. So Fiscal Integrity is Service number 710. The recommendation is $1,051,000. And this program ensures that property tax credits are not fraudulent, works with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation for appeals, working primarily with commercial properties to ensure that commercial properties are properly assessed. So it includes assessment appeals, work on making sure that pilots are correct, and other related tax credit management. Finance Project Management is funded through the Capital Fund for one position that works to ensure that any software applications implemented within the Finance Department have thoroughly been vetted, working with the agencies to ensure that whatever software we install works properly and supports the agencies. So that will conclude the overview.
Thank you. Councilman Scott? Oh, sorry, President Young.
Good morning, Mr. Raymond. On page 93, Service 148, can you explain how these projections are made, and do we need more staff to decrease suspected wait time?
Okay, so I'm on page 193. And your question is...
Metrics for number calls requiring assistance.
Yes.
Your target is for fiscal 18, 270. That's an increase.
Yes, and that increase is primarily due to the fact that we're projecting increased number of calls related to red light and speed cameras coming online, and significantly ramping up in fiscal 19, because we'll be bringing more cameras online.
Okay, and the wait time has increased. Is that because you need more staff to handle this, to keep our citizens from being on hold for, you know, an extra, what is it, an extra minute?
Yeah, for an extra minute.
Yeah. Because already they complain about being on hold.
No, understood. The increase in the wait time is directly related to the increase in the projected call volume.
Okay, is there any information that the city can provide that will help allay the expected increase in calls and wait times that we can give to the citizens?
I'd just like to add...
You have to speak into the mic.
So I'm Janice Simmons, Chief for the Bureau of Revenue Collections. I'd just like to add that we're seeing that people are modifying their behavior. The estimates are conservative. We probably won't be longer in call time. We know that more people are starting to use our collections inbox, and they're emailing us. And so rather than call on the phone, more people are relying on the electronic responses that we're able to provide in 24 hours.
Okay. But is there any information you could give to the Budget Committee, so that we can alert the citizens of what they need to do in order not to be on hold, even though you have some that's emailing now? Any information we can share with them to make it easier for them?
We don't have any plans to increase the number of staff currently, because we'd have to move out of the call center. There's no room for growth. We're currently housed in a temporary space, because we were moved out of our existing space due to some changes in the administration. And we're targeted to move to the Wallman Building in midsummer. And so that's going to provide some room for growth. So if we see that we do need to grow, we can, but we can't do anything until we move.
This performance metric does not include information on amount of debt issued per year or debt outstanding. Is there a reason for that? Is there a reason for that?
Not particularly. We thought the best measures would be rate of return on the short-term investments, which is tied to the U.S. Treasury Bill, and the interest rate on GO bonds issued, to ensure that the rates that we procure are competitive and the best rates that are possible.
Okay, well, can the future performance metrics include GO and rev debt issued and outstanding per fiscal year, as well as other relevant statistics such as GO debt as a percentage of actual taxable value of property?
Okay, as a percentage of...
As a percentage of... Where, let me see, because GO debt issue outstanding per fiscal year, as well as other instances of GO debt. Percentage of actual taxable value of property. We'll send you these questions, you know, so you'll have them. Mr. Chair, you say two per council people, so I'm finished for this round.
I didn't, but thank you for reading my... But thank you for reading my mind. Mr. President, that last question, can you, or you're going to, okay, so that's request number one. So we're going to number the requests like we did last year, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. So request number one, Marguerite, is from the President. And that was...
I'll make sure she gets it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, by the end of the day, or by the, I guess the end of the day tomorrow, we'll have day one questions for you, so, okay. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Director, to stay on the same service for one second on Service 150, can you talk a little bit more about the short-term investments and what they are, how they work?
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Janelle Rogers. Chief for Bureau of Treasury Management. Our short-term investments are actually guided by the investment policies that's established. We normally, our investments go out between a matter of two, three days, two, three months, to meet the expected outlays for the city. So we normally invest in agencies. We stay very conservative. We purchase agreements, and the Merrill Investment Pool.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Director, to go back to Service 711, and the question is actually not about that service, but you actually made me think of a point. So the position, again, is responsible for coordinating and implementing any system changes throughout the agencies, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, within Finance currently right now, do you have a similar position within Finance that looks at your work, each of the bureaus' works within Finance, to look at how that is impacting through a lens of equity, be it how your services are more impacting black people, or women, or older people, or gay people, or poor people? Do you guys have a position that does that right now in the Department of Finance?
We do not.
Thank you, sir.
Director Raymond, can you quickly, or Councilman Scott, you good?
I'm done, yes, there's two. There's two, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Can you briefly describe the Department of Finance's role in printing and sending out water bills?
Yeah, water bills are printed by the Department of Public Works and are mailed through the municipal post office.
So Finance doesn't have a role in that?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. Councilman Pinkett, and we've been joined by Councilman Zekon from the 1st District, and Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton from the 6th, and Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Raymond, the Service number 708 calls for the creation of a new analyst position that'll focus on revenue generation and cost-saving initiatives.
Yes.
While I'm extremely interested in the cost-saving, well, I'm interested in cost-saving initiatives, I'm very intrigued by the role for this person as relates to revenue generation. So can you, can you talk about this new position and what the expectations?
708.
708, uh-huh.
Yeah.
What should we expect from, you know, this role?
Yeah, this position is in the recommended for the Budget Bureau, so Mr. Sinemi will...
Sure, so, so this position is looking at both cost savings and revenue generation. So, remember, we're about halfway through our 10-year financial plan, so one thing that we're looking to do this year is to refresh that plan, and just make sure we're on top of any other opportunities for revenue generation, other cost-savings measures that we can have prepared to implement over the next few years. This also, part of the idea of this position too, is coming out of some of the work we did on property tax assessments this year, where we had some areas of the city show declines. So having another analytical, you know, mind to go after and try to figure out what's happening in that area, too.
So, is there currently someone fulfilling this role in Finance, or is this a new, I guess, way of thinking as it relates to Finance to try to identify, you know, revenue? Because oftentimes, when you come before the council, I always ask about this particular role, how do we, you know, identify, you know, streams of revenue, so...
Sure, so our revenue team has three, only three people today, so it's one manager, two analysts. They're mostly focused on projections and managing the forecasts, so we want to have some person that at least spends part of their time looking at additional revenue opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. Can you tell me how successful the Retail Business District's license program is?
I would characterize it as a mixed bag. It's been very difficult to collect 100 percent of the revenue from the districts, because, number one, they change so frequently and go out of business so frequently.
Oh, wow.
A lot of these businesses do not stay in existence for 12 to 18 months. We can send the bill out, and the mail comes back to us, because the business entity has already closed up.
Oh, wow.
And what the goal of this is, is that there's a fee based on square footage, et cetera. We collect the money, we collect a, I think, 2 percent fee, and then send the rest back to the 10 business districts, so that they can make, they make the decision how to use the revenue for whatever improvements they want in their district. But there's an issue with the collection rate, because so many of these businesses fail to survive.
Got it. So would you be on board for maybe changing, it seems like the program may need to be changed then? Because if they're going out of business, and that means we're not really collecting anything, and the...
Yeah, I would defer to Baltimore Development Corporation for that. They take the lead on working with the retail business establishments.
Okay.
And I think they would be better suited to address the type of challenges that these small businesses may have. Our only role with this is issue the bill, collect the cash, and send it back to the districts for whatever uses they determine.
Okay. And my last question, changing gears, since we only have two, can you talk about moratorium on water bills going into Saks tells, how it's impacted revenue this year?
Well, okay, I believe what you're referring to is, as it relates to tax sale, for owner-occupied properties, where there's only a delinquency for water, they were removed from tax sale. Otherwise, as in years past, those properties would have been eligible for tax sale.
And I just want to add, we didn't see a significant decline in our revenue from the tax sale as a result of that. The numbers are very close.
Yeah.
I don't know them off the top of my head, but I can round them for you. So it was like $20 million last year versus $21 million this year.
Yeah, overall, the total collection from tax sale overall, real property, et cetera, yeah, roughly the same.
Can you send that information over to us, please?
I can.
Thank you.
Real quick, Councilwoman, can you clarify exactly what you're asking for? I just want to make sure we get all the requests captured.
I just wanted to know the difference...
The specifics between the two tax sales...
Yes.
...as a result of the moratorium.
Yes, because the mayor put the, yeah.
Got it.
The May 16 tax sale results versus the May 18 versus May 17.
Is it, Councilwoman, you good with that?
Yes.
So that's request number two. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, you s... You're good?
Oh, me?
Oh, no, no, we're still on Snead. You're good? Clark, you're up.
Oh, thank you very much. I have two questions that involve other agencies that have financial impact, okay? So, I just want to clarify, which I think has already been done, but I just want it clarified, clarified. Does finance play any intervening role in the process that begins with a smart water meter in the ground in front of your house? Goes someplace, gets read, gets translated into a bill, goes out as a bill. Is it the case that finance has no role, has no place in that process?
I would say that's correct. However, we collect the payments. So when the bills go out...
Right.
It clearly says make payment to Director of Finance. We receive whatever it is, money orders, the checks, the cash. We deposit it to those individual accounts. Now, a citizen may call us, because their question may be...
Sure, you sent the bill.
Yeah, we sent the bill. So their question may be, did you apply the payment to my account?
Or, what do you mean, I owe $5,000 for a row house?
Right.
For a month.
For a water usage issue, we would refer that to DPW.
So you're going to send that right back to customer service?
At DPW.
And then they'll work with, because you're going to have to, basically, the billing has to, will be the ultimate change. But that's gone back to public, okay.
Right.
That's one question. And another one, I have... That's one question, and another one, I have more, but I only get two. Prescription benefits. Thank you, and Human Resources and the mayor for correcting what was an error that said that the city was giving up that program in 2020, and that it would go private contractual. So now we know the city will continue to sponsor a prescription benefit program. My question to you is this. Apparently, that program has been bid out to a new vendor, no tears shed, at quite a savings. What is that savings, and how could it possibly affect the ultimate program that's, our prescription program that is designed by the city for 2020 and beyond?
Understood. I will address part of it, and I'll ask the Budget Director to assist me. So, to begin, a city-sponsored retiree Medicare Part D prescription drug benefit will be in effect after December 31, 2019.
Thank you.
Which was related to the hearing we had in the fall.
Yeah.
And the subsequent written communications that we sent out.
Correct, we have it framed.
I'm sorry.
It's framed on the wall.
Oh. Now, we did go out on bid for new healthcare providers and a new prescription drug company, and the purpose of this was to obtain better rates.
Right.
So there were significant savings, I'll allow the Budget Director to address that.
How much?
That's why we got the Budget Director here.
So, yeah, last year, the, sorry, the prescription drug contract was bid out, it used to be with Express Scripts, and it was Caremark, CVS won the award. The savings we're estimating for the full year in fiscal 19 is about $20 million.
So, 20 million in this, in which, in this, in the coming fiscal?
In fiscal 19, we're projecting, and the way, the way you'll see that is that those, those savings are split among many city agencies because the prescription drug cost is allocated to each position in the budget. So you'll see that it's, it's, it's allocated across the entire budget, but we're estimating about 20 million total of savings.
I know I just have two questions, but if I had any more, I would say, does that savings extend across time? And if so, besides benefiting the agencies that pay into it, is there any way to anticipate rolling part of it into the benefits to the constituents after 2020?
So.
Or could I send that for a, for a response?
Let's, we're going to come right back to you, Councilwoman. We've been joined by Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, member of the committee. Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, so my question, first one's on payroll, you had on page 11, you were talking about payroll, and so before being on the council, I had worked at the State's Attorney's Office, and I'd noticed that between the two agencies, there's a completely different process in which payroll is conducted. I'm not sure if they're using the same system or not, so my question is, do all city agencies use the same payroll system? And if so, why don't they use the same process in which they conduct payroll?
All city agencies utilize the same payroll system, which is the payroll system located within the Finance Department, Accounting and Payroll Services. There are differences within the agencies as to how they record time and report time. They all should be consistent with the administrative manual.
Gotcha, so then why, like in, I guess, take the City Council as an example, would our staff be going through and entering their timesheets through like Microsoft Excel when clearly this payroll system has an online option where each individual employee can go log in and go ahead and do it themselves, rather than having additional hands touching each paper and doing all that data entry?
I think maybe I'd like to get that as a follow-up in writing, because I need to get a better understanding of how council processes their payroll, and then we can properly address your, your question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that over to you.
Councilman Schleifer, can you repeat that request?
Oh, no, no, he, he made a request of me, so that's going to be his request number one.
So, so the request is?
I got, I got you, I'll send it to you.
That's a first.
I'm happy to do it.
Can you?
My second question.
Repeat that though, please, for me?
Yeah, the, the question was about, he, he asked me as far as how payroll, different processes and processing payroll.
Okay, so we're not, that's not on our list.
Not on your list.
My second question is about page 16.
This agents, this division talks about how, to make sure that these tax credits are not fraudulent. So my question is, does this department also look at making sure that our, our constituents are getting the necessary tax credits that are available to them? I know, I'm not sure how long ago it was, maybe you guys know, when the homestead tax credit went from being auto-enrolled to no longer auto-enroll, you know how long ago that was?
I think maybe three years ago.
So, over the past, over the past year or so, I, obviously, I understand why that had happened, and it makes sense, you don't want just everybody being auto-enrolled when they may not be a primary residence, but homeownership is, you know, I, I think one of the most important things in the city, and one of the things that I've seen recently, we've gotten calls in numerous cases where people, either their homestead application wasn't filed, or they never even knew there was such a thing. And that's been, that's been a very costly mistake on homeowners, which will then end up costing them, you know, where they thought they could afford a home, now when their assessment goes up tremendously, they can't afford that difference in price, and being that our taxes are outrageous, property taxes, not making sure people can, you know, are enrolled in the proper credits that are available to them further exacerbates the problem. So my question is, is there anywhere in this, in this division where they help educate consumers, or when, when you guys see that a property was transferred from one to another, where a letter goes out to them in their first water bill, or whatever it may be, saying, by the way, file this paper if this is your primary residence?
Okay, I would say no, that function is not embedded in Service 710, Fiscal Integrity and Recovery. It is in the Bureau of Revenue Collection, which is where our customer service unit is. Now, this was a state law that required the application to, to receive the homestead tax credit. The city has done outreach efforts to try to make citizens aware of the requirement to file, and for those that have not filed, I guess we're the first communication with the homeowner, because they will call us when they get their real property bill to say, my bill looks a lot different than last year. We do the research, figure out that they've lost the homestead credit, and we work with the homeowner and the State Department of Assessment and Taxation to try to restore it. We even try to work with ESTAT to restore it outside of the, their normal cycle time.
And is that also to restore it to back at the date of purchase, or only once they realize there's an issue?
To restore it based on the, the year that they identified that they had lost the credit. See, we're only talking maybe three, it started three years ago, so it wouldn't be more than three years ago. So we try to work with ESTAT to restore it for at least the, the current year when the, when it was discovered. And we, and we definitely try to do that because we recognize that they need, you know, the homeowners need the homestead cap for affordability purposes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Finance, for, you know, all the things that you continue to work on and do for our city. I guess I'm about to say a statement, but also it's kind of a question too. So you know that we have a bill in the committee that I chair, Taxation, Finance, Economic Development, the subcontractor late payments. It's been a longstanding problem in this, in this city, and first, I just want to thank this administration for beginning to work with myself and the council president and the sponsor of the bill, and the bill was approved by, I think, all the members, and we're now in a, we're getting ready to plan a work session. We have all of the information that we asked for, and your department was one of the first to submit that. So, just to also say that it was interesting gathering that information because there were some instances of disrespect to me from other agencies, and it was just weird how that whole thing took place to get the information from the other agencies. So all that to say, I do want to mention, at that hearing, the people that came to testify were mostly, of course, subcontracting businesses, African-American minority women, that just was expressing the long-term problems that they have had getting their checks, and we know that the checks come from Finance eventually. So all that to say, you know, that's a serious problem, because these businesses, again, minority businesses, have to, you know, they have to do things out of the ordinary to make their ends meet, and all this is because of a late payment of the process from the city, and it's just not fair to businesses, especially new businesses that we're trying to get moving in the city. This is a crucial time right now. I just, I'd just like you to express how, I know you think it's a serious issue, and I'm not, I don't want to put blame on anyone or any, any agency, but it, it has come to a point that we have to start making things equal for everyone, because it was clearly blatant that it was not equal. So I, I just would like you to express how you're, what are some steps that you feel needs to be taken? And again, you submitted your information, but I, I want to know your take on it, because you, of course, have representatives that came to the hearing, so could you please express your, give comment?
Before you respond, Council President?
Yeah, Councilwoman Middleton, I don't want to speak for the director, but we have to put pressure on the departments that are not pulling all the information together before it gets to Finance. And once it gets to Finance, then your question that you're asking now, I'll hear from Raymond Henry on that piece. But we need to make sure, this is for the administration, that all of those agencies are making sure that they have all the correct data so that they can get to Finance so people can be paid. It's in the agencies, she don't want to say it, I'll say it, it's in the agencies. But once it gets to Finance, we expect for them checks to be released immediately. Am I correct, Council Vice President?
You're correct.
Okay, I'll address it at a high level. The Finance Department and the administration takes very seriously the concerns that we're not paying subcontractors in a timely manner. So the way it works is, agencies pay the prime, and the prime pays their subcontractors. What I'll say at the outset is that, from the time the Finance Department receives the invoice paperwork in a correct manner from the agencies, it takes Finance three to three and a half days to issue the check. So the real issue is on the front end, and some of the issues include the following. One, has the contractor submitted a proper invoice? Does it calculate correctly, is it for whatever the service is provided, does it include the correct tons of asphalt, miles of road repaired, et cetera? The departments have to review those invoices to determine if they are accurate, so it goes through a quality control quality check at the agency level. It goes through a, a layer of different approvals at the, at the agency level. Does the purchase order have enough money on it, is a change order required, et cetera? Once the invoice is properly formatted and ready for payment and is submitted to the Finance Department, it takes three and a half, three to three and a half days on average to issue the check to the prime. If the vendors are delinquent in providing what they're supposed to provide to the agencies, then there will be a delay. If the contractor has provided an invoice in error, that will delay the process. So one of the things that the Finance Department has done is we have conducted training with the vendors, the contractors, on how to submit correct invoices and the correct submission process. We've also worked with agencies for the same issues, on how to submit invoices in a correct manner that will allow for immediate payment, as opposed to having to bounce the incorrect invoice back to the agencies for whatever deficiencies existed. So yes, we, we take it very seriously, and we continue to work with the agencies to reduce the payment turnaround time on contractor invoices. And really what we're talking about here is invoices related to construction work. And we, we do take this seriously because we know that if we lose the subs because the subs can't wait this long to pay, ultimately, it will increase our costs, and we don't want that, and we want our subcontractors to thrive and to be able to grow their businesses where they can ultimately become primes at some point.
Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Henry, when we pay an invoice, that means that the department has signed off on everything, right? So the sub did their work, and everybody did their work. Why can't we break it down? Because when these subs bid, it says a percentage of what they're going to get. Why we just can't pay them out of that and give the general contractor what they're supposed to get? Why we can't just break out the sub piece and we directly pay the subs, once we have all of the information, that all the work was done and was done correctly? And, 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 I mean, that's something that we need to really explore, because sometimes these generals, they want to stranglehold the subs, you know, and there should be a penalty placed on these general contractors when they don't pay their subs on time, just like us with the city. If I don't pay my water bill by a certain day, there's an extra charge that I have to pay, right? All citizens have to pay, so we should put penalties in place for these general contractors that are not paying these subs and paying them on time. But what I would like to do is, if a, if a general contractor says, Jack Young's company's going to get $250,000 for this work that he's going to do, and it comes in that everything was done right, we should cut that check for 250 to me, not to the GC. So we need to look at that kind of stuff and see if we can legally do that.
Understood.
Pres Contracting LLC?
I'm just making a, you know, just a general, you know, example of why we just can't pay the subs.
Understood.
And I'd just like to add that we also need to look at how some of these jobs that have been put out by contractors, subcontractors, at, when, when these agencies started doing that, they did not look at the fact that these are jobs that were jobs from government, city government employees, that, that money could have been spent on training, and they could have gone through the regular city process. It wasn't, all that wasn't done together, and I think that's part of the reason why we have this disconnect. People, agencies are. People, agencies are so quick on finding outside people to do work. And this is, this is one of the problems that, that we're having. The, the city did not catch up with training and, and taking advantage of the qualified government employees that we have. And all that works together in saving money. So the city needs to look at all of those things. I, I think it would be a big cost savings to go back and see what we are doing in these agencies with our government employees and going back to training them and bringing in apprenticeships and seeing how that is a cost saving from going through all these different levels of, of, of just the money that's being spent on issuing, you know, the whole process is basically messed up. So again, please consider, and, and you know that I constantly, in these hearings and for many years, I've constantly pushed the importance of apprenticeships. And this is one good example of how apprenticeships can work for Baltimore City Government. We need to get back to things that worked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question related to new construction tax credits. I've had a number of constituents call up with concerns about the process, lack of sort of clarity around whether they qualified. They've called, they got put on hold, just a lot of frustration in the process. And this seems like something that could be pretty easily streamlined and just made clear. You know, other cities, you go online, you click the thing, you access it, you download. I mean, where are we at in streamlining it? Because again, this has been a challenge that has come up quite a bit in my year and a half plus on council. And, you know, it, it's people who are still paying high taxes, you know, or often have degrees or, you know, able to read the paperwork but are frustrated by the process. And, you know, I've sort of sat through it with a few of them. It does seem like there is some confusion on the city's side. So I'm wondering if and what we are doing to streamline the process.
Okay, I will allow Ms. Collado to respond. New construction tax credits fall under her purview with the Fiscal Integrity Office.
Good morning. I'm Joanna Collado, Director of Fiscal Integrity. We handle the application for newly constructed. And I think I'm familiar with the process that you're referring to. The part to understand is that the newly constructed is only available for property owners that live in the property as a primary residence. And that indicator is handled by the state. So for them to be eligible to receive the newly constructed, they must notify the state that that is their primary residence. And if that is not done promptly, then they will receive delays on receiving the credit. It's a delay that they're being impacted because the state is part of this process.
So the claim is, is that it's the state that's slowing everything down by not?
In this case, I think I'm, you're referring to an email that you received this morning. It's a property owner that would like to receive a newly constructed tax credit. The property hasn't been reassessed yet. That's one of the steps to receive the credit. The property needs to be reassessed, and also they need to be set as a primary residence for that property. And that, both of those items are handled by the state.
Okay, but again, this has been a pretty common problem, not just today, but generally, just confusion. Like, I, I hear a lot about confusion about these credits. Is there someone who's working on, I just feel like if everything was online, if it was easily accessible?
It is. The application is online currently. Yes, and, and we have somebody taking care of those applications. He been working with all of them, trying to get them in communication with the state so that a process can be streamlined. However, we cannot tell the state to move faster. We follow up often to make sure that that's done.
Okay, maybe if we could identify a liaison at the state? It just seems like streamlining this process would allay a lot of concerns that constituents have and save some frustration for, you know, problems that are less manageable than this one.
Understood.
What I'd like to suggest is if you could provide some of those constituents to my attention, we'd be happy to coordinate that with the state.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer has a quick follow-up on that.
Yeah, just for, for clarity, so the homeowner's tax application, that goes through the state, you said?
That's correct.
Yes.
They're the ones who are physically entering into the system?
It's a state credit, so it's a state application for the homeowner's tax credit, which is based on income eligibility.
And that's also for your primary residence, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Yes.
Gotcha. Um, yeah, so if, if we could get some type of liaison, because I know I personally had that issue where, you know, I submitted mine on my own personal property, my homestead application. It shows that it was entered into the system. But when I called down to the state on that issue, they just said it was a data entry error where they approved the application on the date that, or soon after I purchased the property. But then it had it marked off that it was not my primary residence. So if that's something that we can relate to the state, that there's no reason in the world the system should even allow you to not mark it as a primary residence if they have a homestead application approved?
Understood. Yep, and we'll provide the contact.
You're going to provide a contact within Department of Finance?
Within, for the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. Because the question was related to the homeowner's tax credit.
Right.
Which is a state-administered credit, state application. The second issue related to data entry errors at the State Department of Assessment and Taxation related to the approval of a homestead application. And what happened was ESTAT approved of the application but did not flag that property as owner occupied. So, so that, those, both of those are state issues.
So you're going to?
I'm going to provide the state liaison for that type of issue so that the council members will be able to refer their constituents directly to the state.
And sorry to cut you off, just to summarize, number three, request number three, you're going to provide contact information, email and phone number for someone at ESTAT to address what Councilman Cohen and then Schleifer were talking about.
Yep, homeowners and homestead processes.
And new construction.
And new construction.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if I may ask you a question, I'm not exactly certain the schedule says, yes, sir, all services except budgeting.
Except for Bob's group, as in BBMR.
Okay.
So like the function that putting together the city budget as a whole? So anything to do with that? Or like any interaction between BBMR and like the city school system with putting together what their allocation is?
All right, I'm going to ask you a question.
Everything else I think is fair game.
If you think that this is more appropriate, some other time, you let me know, please.
Thank you for asking.
I'm, I'm looking for the Innovation Fund. And what I'm seeing is that it's been moved into the Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions, which is also being absorbed into City Stat. And when I look at the City Stat section of the budget, there is nothing in there that mentions anything about making loans for innovation purposes, which is?
We're going to address that here, and we're also going to address that when Ms. Parlock comes.
Yeah, there's a hearing this afternoon about innovation as a whole. But just for your reference, yeah, the City Stat Office is under merrility. There's a separate program called the Innovation Fund. In the book, it's in, it's in the second volume, it's called MR-Innovation Fund, that shows some of the history and talks about the recent history there. So all that will be talked about.
Okay, if we're going to talk about it later, that's cool. I mean, it's zeroed out in that section of the budget. But we'll talk about it later.
Why, why did that move?
The administration decided to move the function from the finance department to the office of the mayor.
And Councilman, that's zeroed out this year?
The Innovation Fund is zeroed out in the budget, from what I could tell, and?
So that, remember, that was part of the, the transfer bill to pass the, to pass the fiscal 18 budget. That, the, the dollars that were in the 18 budget originally for Innovation Fund was zeroed out as part of the agreement, the transfer bill to fund the children's programs. So it was zero in the adjusted 18 budget, and it's still zero in the 19 budget.
Can, can you go back just, just 30 seconds, Bob? I'm sorry, the, the, that was zeroed out as part of the budget agreement?
As part of the budget agreement.
And then what was the children's piece you just?
Well, it was, it was the items that were zeroed out or reduced to add money for, it was Safe Streets and for the after-school programs.
So how does that impact the, the 19 funding for the Innovation Fund?
Oh, it was zero.
So it's been zeroed out, okay.
Once it was taken out of the base for 18, it was out of the base for 19.
So it's gone?
Yes.
Wasn't that like a revolving fund? Wasn't there money in there to begin with?
So there is, I don't have the number in front of me, but there is a balance in the fund. And the reason for that is that over time, the projects that were done historically have paid, have paid their loans back. Now, not all of them have paid their loans back, but most of those have paid their loans back. So the idea was that there would be a general fund contribution over a series of time. I guess it goes back probably four or five years now to kick off the fund and make loans. And I don't think that we'll need an ongoing appropriation because now some of those projects are starting to pay back, so it's meant to be revolving. I don't have the figure in front of me about how much is available.
We'll talk about it later.
Uh, yes, but I think Councilman Dorsey and I are going to want an accounting of what's outstanding so we can talk about that, or just please be prepared to talk about that later.
Yeah.
When this comes up, how much is outstanding, when that's expected to be repaid, and what the plan is for those dollars once they are repaid.
Sure, yeah.
I know some specific plans I want to talk about at some point.
In that, in that, in that chapter, there's a list of all the projects and what's, what's their status?
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. A year ago, I was here asking about how we are accounting for property damage due to vehicles crashing into things that the city owns. It's a year later, and I have no meaningful answers to those questions. I want to know when a car smashes into something that the city owns, how we are recouping the cost for those damages and the replacement of that property, and who is watching the money? Like, it's where a year later, I've asked about this half a dozen times over the last year. For, I've, I've asked, I've engaged DOT, DPW, finance, police, the law department. I can't get anybody to say when something is damaged, that's city property, this is how the money is being tracked. And I'm going around my district day and night looking at street lamps that are missing from the street because cars have wiped them out, and they sit there for months and months. And I don't know if the, if the irresponsible and, if the driver who smashed into that is being held accountable for the damage that they did and the cost that they're, you know, the city is incurring because of that. And, you know, I'm, I'm driving past the fence on Hartford Road at Urban Avenue every single morning, and it's still not repaired. And DOT is saying, well, look, these things happen, and the money never comes back to us. Who's tracking the money? Where is that? What's going on? Who is taking responsibility for this?
Councilman Steve Kraus, Deputy Director, we, we did respond to your question. I think you had asked this a couple of months back. And when we responded, we said the Department of Finance Risk Management, we'll let, let Mr. Kerr talk about this in a minute, that we handle the, the problem when it's damaging a, a city building that falls under risk management. But any of these other examples, I believe it falls under DOT or another agency. So Doug?
So DOT, I would just want to say, DOT doesn't have the legal arm to go after the money. And DOT is not who receives payments when a settlement is reached or when an insurance payment is made for damages that's done by the driver. So somebody, like, DOT can say, well, this just happened, and it's going to call, we estimate it's going to cost us, you know, $15,000 to fix this thing. And then the law department has to go after that money.
Yes.
And finance has to receive the payment. So finance has some role in this.
Hang on, Steve, one second. President Young?
I just want to chime in on this. Councilman, if a police does not write the reports, then transportation can't get the information, and the information can't get to the law department, and it can't get to finance. So the onus is on our police department to write a report when our property is being damaged in accidents. I caught one in front of my door. This has been my issue long before you got here. And the thing is, the police department have to write the report. They don't do it. But Councilwoman, if the police department writes the report, then we can go after them.
Assuming the police department writes a report, assuming we can actually expect the police department to do their jobs. Let's talk about who is responsible for making sure that the money is being sought, collected, and redistributed to the agency that is responsible for using it.
Doug, Mr. Kerr, can you address some of this?
Doug Kerr, Risk Manager for the city. That's one function that is actually handled by the law department. For instance, you probably remember not too long ago where a, a vehicle crashed into a city, city school building where a bunch of students were. That claim, because it's a city building, is in my shop. So I'm getting all the details, all the costs associated with that, and then going after that third party for recovery. For light posts, for guardrails, for fences that are damaged, that is a claim that the law department would handle. Go after that third party, find out who their insurance company is, send it to the collection side of law, and they should be going after them for reimbursement from that third party, whether it's their insurance company or them directly.
But at the end of the day, that check from that insurance agency isn't coming back to the law department. It's coming back to the finance department. The finance department has to figure recoup costs or recoup revenue, whatever, into the next year's budget or its ability to appropriate money to the proper, the proper city agency like DOT. So why doesn't finance, finance has something to do with that? The law depart, like, the check is coming to you.
The check will be made out to the Director of Finance, that's correct. And, but it's up to the, actually, the check made out to the Director of Finance should actually go to the law department so they can mark it off their books.
And it gets properly posted to the account for what it's for, damage to city assets.
And so who's, like, who made this decision that there should be a bifurcated system like this? Why?
A, a good question.
What's, I mean, what is wise about having a bifurcated system?
Very good question. I've been with the city now for 12 years, and this is the first risk management program where I've seen automobile liability and general liability claims. A general liability claim would be a citizen walking in to pay their water bill, slip and fall in, in the building because we didn't put down signs that said it was wet. Those two, auto and general liability, are handled by the law department. All other risk falls under finance and within my department. It's been that way since I've been here, and I know that the city solicitor has always wanted to maintain control of those two type of losses. So if I had, I'll give you an example, an automobile claim. If a police officer was stopped at a red light and got, well, just let me just tell you, the, the weirdness about it is police officer stopped at a red light, he gets rear-ended. We have two claims. We have an injury claim to the, to the police officer, and we have an automobile claim. I know about the injury claim because he's going to the hospital right away. Under a worker's comp, we're taking care of it. That automobile claim goes to the law department, and it's up to them to track that third-party person down. So I track them because I want my money back on the injury to our employees. We, we recover about $1.1 million from injuries to our employees. We, we recover about 1.1 million dollars from injuries to our employees every year, but it's up to the Law Department to recover that property damage to that city vehicle. Same thing with a third party striking your light post or, or anything like that.
This is, uh, thank you.
Well, Mr. Councilman, we should be able to, to get for you, I guess, some information on, on the money that we do collect.
Everything needs to come to the Budget Committee.
Go ahead.
So, um, we've been joined by Councilman Stokes from the twelfth district, and Councilman Henry, you had a follow-up question related to, and, um, just be mindful that the next, um, group is coming in, um, in the next fifteen minutes, so I wanna wrap up a question.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, sir. I promise not to take fifteen whole minutes. Um, I, so, as, as one of my colleagues pointed out, the city self-insures. So for practical purposes, would, should we be treating risk management and thinking of risk management as our insurance company, or if there's some other coordinating entity that oversees, you know, our, our, our insurance?
Primarily, we are 100% self-insured. Where we aren't self-insured is on property losses to city-owned buildings. For instance, Courthouse, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago in April, they had a, they had a fire. So, we have a $500,000 deductible on our property policy. Basically, we're self-insured up to 500,000. Anything above that goes into insurance. AIG is the insurance carrier. But all other lines, workers' comp, automobile, general liability, we're all self-insured.
So the types of examples that my colleague was giving of, uh, a driver hits a streetlight and totals it?
Correct.
Um, that would be something that, that we, we're self-insured for that?
What, we would be self-insured for it, that, that the details related to the loss and the cost to repair it should be a claim that they should submit to law, and as, as the Council President...
Oh, wait, hold on. Who's, who's "we"?
Um, DOT, whoever's gonna pay for it.
DOT...
Whoever's responsible for fixing...
Should, should submit a claim to the Law Department?
Correct.
Why?
Because it's that type of damage that the Law Department handles. They have decided that they would handle any damage to street poles, lights, um, uh, you, signs, anything like that.
So DOT, when they lose a light pole, they go to...
That is, that appears to be at the responsibility of...
Someone else.
Somebody else.
They would go to the Law Department, and the Law Department would then be responsible for tracking down the police report on the incident.
Correct.
And then the Law Department's Collections Department would reach out to the driver?
Correct. And say, we've just spent 2,500 dollars to repair this sign, here's the backup, please, uh, please reimburse us.
So, did you used to do this before you did it for the city somewhere else?
Yes.
So, is that normal?
Yes. Well, it, it's, yes, it's normal to go out, I mean, after it, it's, it's something that we were...
Is it normal that there's the Law Department doing some of them and you doing some of them?
No.
Okay. If, if that was going to change, and you were going to do all of them, where would that have to be done from?
I think the decision would have to be made from the city solicitor.
Yep.
Okay.
He's, he's...
I didn't hear what the, just said.
If, 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 if we were going to change...
One, one, stop, one at a time. Councilman Henry.
If we were going to change the bifurcated system into one where one entity had all responsibility for what is essentially a big project management job of making sure that the city gets what it has coming to it?
That's not what you said before. Councilman Dorsey asked what you said. Can you just repeat what you said before, the short version of it, please?
Who, who, who would be the, where would the decision get made to make it one process rather than a bifurcated one?
Got it. Councilman Dorsey, are you good with what?
That's a good question. I wanted to, I heard two answers at the same time.
And the answer is...
Director Raymond, start.
...decision with the city solicitor and the Director of Finance.
Okay.
Do you concur?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Everyone good?
Yep, thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. I, what, what's your name?
It's, uh, Doug Kerr.
Doug, yes, we've emailed before.
Yes.
Thank you for using your outdoor voice. I wish every other agency official that comes in front of the City Council spoke with your volume. Thank you.
Actually, I'm passionate about it, because I, I think we, on the workers' comp side, you know, we, we recover 1.1 million dollars. I can tell you that. I just wish I could tell you what you're looking for.
We're good. Doug, thank you. I love your volume. Please keep doing that. Councilman Dorsey.
I am just looking for an accounting of, like, the last three years of damages, the value of damages, and what has been recouped, and what's outstanding.
Okay. So, request number four, which is Councilman Dorsey, uh, is gonna be, say that again?
The last three years, let's say, of...
It's up to you. Five, it could be one, it could, what do you, it's your question.
Uh, maybe I ask one question quickly. How long does it generally take to recoup on damages?
If it's, if it's a light pole, and they say that it's...
Well, if it's something that the Finance Department actually does, because that's not light poles, right?
Oh, for us?
Yeah.
For me, it, it depends on the size of the loss. Uh, I'm, for instance, I still have outstanding invoices that need to be paid for the fire that happened two years ago in, um, Courthouse West.
All right, so that's an example of a long one, two years.
If it's a simple, clean-cut thing, it could be, you know, and it's within $10,000, uh, it's fixed. We can, we get the documentation. Usually what I do is I make the agency pay for it, so they are happy with the job that's ever been done, send me the invoices, and we reimburse them.
Okay, so let's just say three years. Two years sounded like a long example, so three years should be okay. Three years of, uh, specific claims, and, uh, the amount recouped, and what's outstanding on each of them. I'm also interested in, like, what the city's costs are just to recoup damages.
Let me see if I can summarize what your request is. Itemized list of claims over the last three years, the total value of the claims, and how much of that's outstanding.
I'd like to know the individual values of the claims.
Yeah, an itemized list.
Okay.
For each claim, value, and how much is outstanding. Characterize that right?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
And, and do we have any estimate of the cost to recoup things in terms of man-hours, personnel, city resources?
So we want itemized list of claims, total value for each one, how much is outstanding, and, uh, let's call it a guesstimate of the value of, of man-hours and, and other service slash product associated with recouping this.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
On an annual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Coming back to, hold on. Councilman, you're good?
I'm so good, thank you.
Council President, you, or you're, you're good? Okay, um, we have, uh, Councilwoman, if you bear with me, I'm gonna go to Councilman Stokes. All right, and then back to Councilwoman Clark, 'cause she had a, a request, and then Council President Young will finish out. Is that, or Council President, you wanna go first?
Mine has to be written, though, so, um, I've noticed this one doesn't have to be.
All right, Council President, you go, you go first, and then we'll go to Stokes, and then Clark will finish. Council President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I, I guess, um, I don't know who would answer this, but I'm gonna ask you. Uh, what is the procurement process in bidding our small contracts, um, RFPs for bite-sized construction, demolition, and materials and services? Who would answer that?
Hello, Erin Scher Smith, Bureau of Procurement. I'm sorry, could you clarify your question? You said small procurements just related to construction?
Yes.
So if it's construction services that might be repairing a roof or, um, you know, drain cleaning, things that could be associated with construction but aren't actual Public Works contracts, that would...
We're talking about major contracts.
Major, okay. Then that would not be through my office, that would be either, uh, Department of Public Works, Department of Transportation, Department of DG, uh, General Services. They each have their own procurement office.
Okay, but the bidding come through procurement, right?
No, it does not. We don't touch it in any way.
Those agencies have delegated procurement authority for construction contracts. Per the Charter. Outside of the Finance Department Bureau of Procurement.
So, so when these contracts come before the Board of Estimates, they don't come from procurement? They come from the agency themselves?
That is correct. If the memo is from the director, that would be something they procured on their own. If it's, um, under my name, that means we procured it on their behalf, but that would be just the light services, uh, and goods, not an actual construction, uh, construction project.
Okay, um, I, let me, um, can I finish? Um, so, the, I thought everything came under, under your shop?
No, that, it does not. That would be nice.
So again, if it's construction for Department of Transportation, General Services, and Public Works, they have delegated authority to procure those services directly.
Okay, and then MBO, what role do they play?
So they coordinate with each of those agencies directly, so they...
So they can break out these, these, uh, small contracts?
Um, MBO cannot. They can only, uh, set subcontracting goals. However, um, uh, we've been working with Paul Taylor and Matt Garbark to look at the size of contracts, that's...
'Cause, 'cause what we're interested in is breaking down these big contracts so that smaller companies can get a piece of the pie.
Correct, and so I can speak to what we're working on, which is actually, we're going through the list of all our contracts and looking at which ones are appropriate for that. And all of the agencies, DOT, DPW, and DGS, are doing the same process for those, to find those that can be broken down, um, and still be somewhat manageable, to actually provide an opportunity, um, and, and so some can and some can't. But we've, we've already identified a good number. Now, it does mean that there's going to be more procurements and more administration, um, but, uh, we're already in the process of doing that.
Okay, um, you want to follow up on that?
If I could, if I can just follow up for a minute, so, who's in charge of this?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, before you, before you go, we've got, we've got five minutes to get through your follow-up. Councilman Stokes' question, Councilman Pinkett's, and your other request. Please go.
Oh, who's in charge of the process that was just described? That everybody, including contractor, contractors for construction, as well as for things, materials, and supplies, are all working together to coordinate, to break down and get general contractors with smaller companies. Who's in charge?
Do you mean the unbundling committee?
I mean, who's in charge of that committee and that pro, program?
So I believe it's now officially under the City Stat Office.
Oh my God. Okay, um, thank you, um, well, okay, so we have to ask City Stat about that, but it looks like it's got lost in the shuffle, and it's really important to us. Now, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Director, I have written down, um, in advance my, what I'm trying to find out about the savings that you're doing with the prescription program.
Can you, can you read that very quickly, and then?
I sure will.
And then pass it over to me, so that, that will be request number five?
Sure, here's a copy, um, oh my God, where are my sheets? Yes, I can read it to you. Um, it's what I said. Um, prescription benefits, how much saved by the bid? How do these savings figure, you don't have to write it down. I have a copy of this written, I just need, okay, that I will give you.
Yep, give that to me, not to...
I will give it to both of you. I will give it to everyone.
Please give it to me first.
I wrote it down, and then all I'm asking is that it be directed to the committee so that we can get an answer. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes ma'am. Council President Young.
Right, quick. Um, the process that Ms. Scher described, you say is handled in City Stat?
I believe that's who it's currently under. It is involving, um, Paul Taylor from the Mayor's Office, uh, as well as various other agencies that we meet regularly to review the contracts and plan for how they will be unbundled.
When did that happen? And it went to City Stat?
Uh, I believe, uh, about two months ago. I'd have to verify that.
Is City Stat coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes.
Wow, thank you. Um, Mr. Raymond, uh, a baby bit couple of months ago, I introduced a resolution about police seized contraband, and part of it was, um, forced access. And I had asked you before how much money that came from over there, and approximately about $2 million. And I requested, maybe the Chairman can request this too, why that is not in a line item in a budget, that's saying how much money that came from over there put into the budget. You said it goes into the general fund, but how is it that spent? I mean, it's...
Asset, you're referring to asset forfeiture?
Right. So I requested for it to be in a, a line item in a budget, to, to tell you how much came from over there and how it's spent. And your answer was, you couldn't do it. And I, I just don't believe it. I think that should be in the budget, because it's part of transparency when we're talking about openness and transparency within the Police Department and that money. And again, Mr. Chairman, can we have a request for this to be put into the budget? So it shows how much money that was, um, put into the budget?
Yeah, we'll have Budget respond.
Yeah, it, it, the, the revenue is in the budget. It's a revenue source. It's general fund revenue.
No, I'm not, I know it's a general fund, but it should be in a budget, how much money come from over there, if it's $2 million. 'Cause when you put in a general fund, it's all over the place, and I'm gonna use the example. If I'm a drug dealer and I go to church, I put $20,000 in the church, but when they collect the money in the church, you don't know where it came from. So, and I, again, I'm asking again, can that, we, I'm requesting it be in the budget. If you, whatever you got from over at the Police Department, just don't put it in the general fund. It should be a budget item to say how much that was received.
Yeah, so we, we can follow up directly with you. Um, it's, it's general fund, there's a lot of sources that are general fund revenue. So for example, property tax is not allocated.
Sorry, I'm not talking about property tax. I just request, that's a request.
But it's general fund revenue, it's unrestricted, so it's not allocated.
So you can't do it.
For one particular line item. It's not, it's, it's general fund revenue, so it's not allocated for, for one particular line item.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, sir.
Then we're gonna close out. Parking Authority, Pete, Dave, you guys are ready? Get ready to jog up.
Director Raymond, the, um, the city, through its different agencies, receives, I would imagine, millions of, millions of dollars in grant funding. Um, but our, um, I think the, the Baltimore City Single Audit for FY17 mentioned, um, a, a weakness or, um, material weakness related to our grant accounting function. Um, can you tell us where we are with that? Um, is there an effort? Um, it also identified that the, the fact that different agencies do their own accounting for those grants. Is there an effort to centralize that? Um, are we, are we in a better place so not to jeopardize any future grant funding because, you know, of accounting?
There were issues with the, um, 2017 Single Audit, which relates to, uh, federal grant funds. Uh, we've taken a number of steps to, to address this. We've created a Grants Management Office, uh, to work with agencies to close out old accounts, accounts that no longer should be having charges. Uh, we've implemented a CRM system, which is a central repository for all grant-related information. For example, catalog of, uh, federal domestic assistance numbers. This is the format that the, uh, Single Audit is based on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're working with the agencies right now to load all of their active grants into the CRM by May 31st of this week, so that we'll have a comprehensive list of all active grants that the city has by agency and the dollar amount. As it relates to agencies having their own accounting systems, it's not that they have their own accounting systems. What agencies have traditionally done over the last twenty years or so is used in-house tools such as, uh, Excel spreadsheets to manage and track their grants. The city's official accounting system is City Dynamics. That is the city's official, uh, grants accounting system. We're working with agencies so that they can better utilize the city's official accounting system. system. Long-term, we're looking at, uh, a new ERP system for the city, a new accounting system for the city, and new Grants Management System for the city. And we believe that this will result in improvements and the steps that we're taking as it related to the May 31st deadline, we believe will help, uh, ensure that we don't get a repeat finding for the fiscal 18 Single Audit for that same issue.
And so when do you anticipate those measures and systems being implemented?
Well, we're starting to work on it now, but it's probably a two- to three-year process to implement the ERP and the accounting, but it's already started. This is under the direction of B-SIT with, uh, Director Frank Johnson.
Chairman Costello, I'd like to ask the committee at some point if we could have Finance come back to give us an update on the progress of implementing these new systems.
Um, is that something you want to talk about this week when?
No, no, okay. For, for future.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, Director Raymond, thank you. Director Raymond and Steve and everyone else, it is a pleasure working with you guys. I, you guys are always responsive and I really appreciate it very much, so thank you. And I just wish people would use your voice when they're in here, so thank you. Pete, you're up.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we've got five requests for Finance. Karan, I know last year, by like the third hour, things got out of control with the requests. Question, uh, uh, Request One, Council President Young, Performance Metrics. Uh, Request Two, Councilwoman Sneed, that was the delta between May 18 and May 17 tax sale. Uh, Question Three, Councilman Cohen in Schleifer, that was a point of contact at SDAT. Uh, Request Four was Councilman Dorsey, information on last three years the city claims. And, uh, Request Number Five was Councilwoman Clark, and that's the prescription, uh, related stuff. And we'll, Mayor's Office, Government Relations, we'll start putting that together and we'll have it typed up by the end of the day. Thank you, Parking Authority.
Doug, I'm poetry. I'm glad to meet you in person.
Nice to meet you. The session this year-
Yeah, I know we spoke on a couple of minutes-